Committee of the Hole, March 19th, 2024. Mr. Clerk, please call the rule.
Counselor Kelly.
President.
Vice President Collins.
President.
Counselor Lozaro.
President.
Counselor Lemon.
President.
Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sane.
Present.
President Baer's.
Present, seven present and none absent. The meeting is called to order. There will be a meeting in the Medford City Council at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chamber, second floor, Medford City Hall, 85 George P. Hassett Drive, Medford, MA, and via Zoom. To submit written comments, please email ahird@medford-ma.gov. Action and discussion items, 24-045, offered by President Baer's Resolution Regarding Annual Budget Process for Fiscal Year 2025. Be resolved by the Medford City Council that the council president requests city councillors submit individual budget recommendations to the city clerk by Friday, March 1st, 2024, for consideration in Committee of the Hole. Be further resolved that based on the schedule included in this soon-to-be-finalized budget ordinance, the city council and city administration will follow the following budget schedule for the fiscal '25 city budget. By March 1st, city councillors submit individual budget recommendations. By Friday, March 22nd, city council submits collective budget recommendation to the mayor. From April 15th to May 15th, city council holds preliminary budget meetings with department heads. And by Friday, May 31st, the mayor will submit a comprehensive budget proposal to the city council. Part of the budget ordinance, just to further elucidate the process that we're going through here, this new budget process. Once we have submitted those recommendations to the mayor, we will get a response in writing prior to the presentation of the comprehensive budget proposal. In addition, when we hold the preliminary budget meetings, we will have the annual operating budget for the previous year, the department heads' budget request for the upcoming fiscal year, and requested new staff and programs or services for the upcoming year. And we also should be getting the budget to actual paperwork that we have been talking about wanting for a while. So we will have all of that in advance of our preliminary budget meetings, which will start in April. And I'm working with the administration to lock down some days for those meetings. We have some April dates, and then we'll have some May dates. They will be mostly Wednesdays at 6:00 PM, Committee of the Holes. So we may avoid a Saturday meeting this year on the budget. We may not, no promises. One of the things that we talked about at our Committee of the Hole on March 6th was submitting, we talked about the recommendations that we had submitted. What should have gone back out to the council and is available on our meeting portal is all of those recommendations kind of grouped by category. I put them into four categories. One was preventing budget cuts. The second category was increases in staffing and personnel expenses. The third was increases in non-staffing and ordinary expenses. And the fourth was one-time expenses and items for further study. And then also included was the, was just all of our recommendations in one document. I'm pretty sure mostly unedited. I may have made some edits to Counselor Sane's because his came in memo form and I made some bullet points. So I hope, I hope they satisfy what your intent was. Thank you. At this point, I think the goal of tonight's meeting is to report something out of committee to the mayor around collective recommendations of the city council. We can, we'll also attach this document, which has everyone's individual recommendations. Counselor Sane, if you want me to attach your memorandum, I'm happy to attach that as well. But, well, you put a lot of work into it. There's, there's like an ink signature on it. I? Thesis? Thesis? Application? Amendment, constitutional amendment. So at this point, you know, I'm, this is the first time, it's not the first time we've done this at all, but it's the first time we've done this in this, under these kind of timelines. I believe last year we sent a set of five recommendations to the mayor for inclusion in the budget. And, you know, that seemed to be a reasonable number of kind of what we all collectively determined to be our top priorities. We could do something similar, different this year. And, but I do think there's a lot of value to kind of honing down this couple, you know, two, three-page list into something that is very clear about the council's wishes for this budget. And I'll leave it at that. Open it up to members of the council to guide our path forward. Counselor Sane.
Thank you. I wanted to, I wanted to thank you for putting in all the effort of collecting and rearranging our, our individual recommendations. I know we had a lot. And it's really helpful to see it all in one place. I think looking at it, one of my general thoughts is that there, so some of the things I'm asking for, like the community liaisons program, some of the things that other councils are asking for, all fall under the purview of the Health Department. And so I think maybe we could further kind of collapse that into that one big category and say, prevent cuts to this department, and then note, like, in, in parentheses, those positions that we're referring to.
So I have from Counselor Sane, a Health Department, a general recommendation around the Health Department Board of Health. Counselor Collins, Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Baer's. Thank you to my colleagues again for everyone's recommendations. It was great to kick off this discussion at our first Committee of the Hole on topic. Looking over the compiled recommendations from us all, I think that there are some, I think, clear avenues for consolidating this, even just looking at category one of preventing budget cuts. I think the other way that I would characterize this grouping of suggestions is around maintaining level service within the Schools Department, within the Board of Health, which Counselor Sane just noted, within the Library Department. And then I think that this also characterizes kind of this shared priority of preventing the loss of positions that are currently grant-funded within the Board of Health, within the Office of Outreach Prevention, and within the Planning Development and Sustainability Department. And I do believe that across all of our contributions, most of us in some way phrased that same recommendation around meet the Schools budget request, meet the Library budget request, don't cut any positions within Board of Health, Office of Prevention and Outreach, Planning Department, even if it means, and perhaps especially if it means finding a way to fit those positions into the operating budget or shift them over to other sources of grant funding. So I would put forward that I do believe there is consensus around all of the numbered points under category one. And I think that those can be consolidated into maintaining level service for schools, libraries, Board of Health, and planning departments.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Sure. Is that a motion, Counselor Collins?
Yes.
On the motion of Counselor Collins, do you need to repeat it yet? Could you repeat that for the clerk, please?
Sure, I'll improv it. The motion would be to consolidate all of the bullet points under category one into the recommendation to maintain level service for the schools, libraries, Board of Health, Prevention and Outreach, PDS Department, including maintaining all currently grant-funded positions. And Mr. Clerk, I can email that to you.
Vice President Collins, move to consolidate all of the bullet points under category one into the recommendation to maintain level service for schools, library, Board of Health, Prevention and Outreach, and PDS Department, including all currently grant-funded positions.
If I can, Mr. President.
Sure. We have a motion, my Counselor Collins, second of my Counselor Sane, discussion, Counselor Scarpelli.
If I, if, if this is the way we're going, I think that in all reality, we, you know, to put a paper out like this, it, it, I don't want it to be presented as the other departments in the community, like DPW, Fire, Police, are being left off that. So you would, I would, I would motion that either we add those city departments to that list, if that's how we're going to break it down. Because, you know, the optics of something that reads as Vice President Collins wants to, wants to move forward, which I, I don't disagree, but we're going to be getting to some, some some nitty-gritty budget issues when it comes time. And I don't want the perception to go out to say, well, we want to maintain these budgets, but it's okay for cuts that the city council wouldn't support the cuts of Police, or cuts of the Fire, or cuts of DPW. So I think in other city departments with, whether it's the secretarial staff, whether it's the Veteran Services. So I, I just think by wording it that way, it opens it up for a slippery slope for the, for what, what's, what, what the message should be. And that's, we want to be level funded with all city, city entities and school entities.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Collins, is that a new hand or an old hand?
Ah, it's a new hand.
Counselor Collins and Counselor Sane.
Thank you. Just wanted to respond quickly to say, I think Counselor Scarpelli's point is well-taken. And I think that it's, I think that we have, you know, as usual, somewhat of a challenging needle to thread here, where, of course, I think it's absolutely not the message to send to say, we care about these cuts and not those cuts. Counselor Scarpelli is absolutely right. That's, that's, you know, and I hope it would go without saying, that's, that's not the message that this council would want to be sending. But unfortunately, you know, we're placed in this difficult position of knowing that cuts are likely to be proposed somewhere. And I think maybe, maybe it would be better to articulate in some fashion, maybe elsewhere in the packet, that the council will ultimately vote dissent to the mayor. That certain departments or positions, whatever this council decides that they will be, are highlighted. You know, in this case, I think many of us mentioned the Schools Department and the Library Department, because often that is where cuts are proposed. And that is where level service is not funded. I know, just speaking only for myself, that's why I prioritize those in my memo. So I think, you know, a discussion point for this council is how to make sure that we target our recommendations towards those departments that we know are usually the most vulnerable, while saying, of course, we're gonna, at the same time, we're advocating for level service citywide. So I just wanted to offer that to say, I, I agree with Counselor Scarpelli.
I think there are, and I'll go to Counselor Kelly and after Counselor Sane, just saying, I think there's kind of three principles getting lumped in here. One is we're talking about recommendations from independent entities, independent governing bodies. So the School Committee for the Public Schools, the Library Trustees for the Library, they make recommendations as to their budget in a different way than happens for the city departments. And then we're highlighting that there's a lot of ARPA grant-funded positions in health prevention and planning. And then the third piece, I think, is all grant-funded positions. So if there are grant-funded positions in Police, or Fire, or DPW, I'm not sure, you know, I, there may be one in Police, there might be one in DPW, I'm not sure of any in Fire. So I wonder if we could just adjust this wording to say, to more along those lines, to say, meet the recommendations of the School Committee, budget request of the School Committee for Medford Public Schools, the Library Trustees for the Medford Public Library, and do not cut any ARPA grant-funded positions in any city department with particular focus on the, that, that, the most, but most of those positions are in health prevention and planning, development, sustainability, and then we have all city departments in there. And then through this process, well, actually, I think for the first time in my time on the council, we'll actually be able to see what the chiefs requested, what the commissioner requested. So that'll be interesting, because usually we only get what the School Committee and the Library request, because they're independent. I'll go to Counselor Sane and Counselor, then Counselor Kelly.
I think you basically, what I was going to say parallels what you just said. I think I wanted to bring special attention to the last two years that we've done this. We have brought out the schools and library in particular. And I think it was clear that we weren't privileging any one department over the other, or leaving anyone behind. And so I, I think Counselor Collins, where she was coming from, was just following what we did in past practice. But I, I think there's some nuance to it and how it breaks down. And I think the proposed amendments make a lot of sense.
Counselor Kelly.
If that proposal goes through, then it probably makes my point sort of moot. But I was kind of looking as a new, relatively new councillor to understand, obviously, the Metro Public Schools is the largest department in terms of funding. But, you know, there's dozens of departments listed here on the website, and I'm, I'm looking for a chart that shows me the size of the budget for each one. But we have an understanding of like, okay, are 20 of these so tiny that they're not, you know, we're not worried, concerned about them? But I will do some research there. And I think that rephrasing to make it any grant-funded position is probably a good one.
Great. Counselor Scarpelli? Oh, okay.
The court of public opinion would throw out and say, well, here we go again, council doesn't want to do X, Y, and Z. So I think if it's phrased that way, I think that's, that speaks volumes, because we, you know, we don't want to lose any of these positions. I mean, the fear of losing Penny's position, I know we lost Penny, but losing Penny's position, I think, would be a huge, huge loss to our community, especially in what she's done for drug prevention and awareness. So, thank you.
Agreed. I'm going to try to write down this change. If we want to move to another recommendation, this will be our first recommendation. And then I'll read back what I have once I've written down what everybody said.
So if I can, Mr. President.
Counselor Scarpelli.
I, I can see this, the hard work you've done, but are we meeting, are we still going to have the department meetings? And are they going to be open and honest discussions, you think, with, with department heads?
I'm hoping more open and honest.
I hope so.
Because I think starting, we're starting before we get the final budget.
Which is good.
And we, we put in the ordinance that we would get the requests of the departments. Now, if the departments are tailoring their requests.
Right.
Prior to writing them, we can't control for that, but that is my hope.
And I think having in the past, not the last few years, but going back four, five years, we would get an update from my finance director of the state of the state and see what kind of, what, what the climate looks like and what our funding would look like from the state. So I don't know if the mayor has discussed anything with you about giving us some clarity as we get closer. Because like I said, all you hear is, you know, in different communities, they've already been given some sort of understanding of what's happening in the state and what their community is going to be looking at for funding. And it doesn't look too promising. So I wonder if we'll be getting some information that can help us prepare our constituents and as we move forward, so.
Yes, before, I don't know entirely in what level of detail, some of that will be, the cherry sheet did come out from State Administration and Finance, and it's basically a level fund cherry sheet for state aid. But yes, we would get a revenue update as well as a budget to actual update before, maybe as the part of that first meeting.
Awesome.
So yeah, that is the intent.
That'll be helpful with everybody. That's great.
And I'm hoping we will get the documentation in advance of the meeting, maybe by a week or two, maybe more.
Thank you.
And Q3 ends on the 31st, so maybe we'll get something that's just quarter two, and maybe we'll get quarter three for that meeting.
That'd be exciting.
It'd be good. Agreed. So we have our first recommendation, which I'll read back in a minute. I just want to get the wording right around a level service budget and meeting certain requests and preventing certain cuts. Counselor Sane raised the Health Department. There are some specific requests. Anyone else, we could, you know, we could go up to five recommendations. Obviously, the first one is meaty, and I think addresses directly the concerning narrative about cuts and not having a level service budget. But there was a lot of other good stuff in here, so we have some room. I see Counselor Collins, and then if anyone else wants to chime in, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Baer's. I think that there is also substantial overlap, kind of a clustering from many of our contributions around the issue of budgeted amount for city solicitor and assistant city solicitor salaries, as well as funding for salaries within the Elections Department. That's split, I think, between category two and category three in the memo that you provided. So just flagging that again as something that I think there is a ponderance of interest in from this council. That was, you know, of course, I'm a little biased. That was one of my individual recommendations, was to raise the salary of the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor salaries to be more competitive with our municipal neighbors, and to raise the salary budgeted for an Elections Director to that of a Director-level position, so as to attract more competitive candidates. But to me, I think that there's pretty close to consensus from the individual recommendations that we received a couple of weeks ago to put that forward as one or two of our additional recommendations. I'd be curious to hear from my fellow councillors if we would want to put legal salaries and Elections Director salaries forward as two more of our recommendations to the mayor.
I, I would support that.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I would, I would support that. I think that's been our biggest cry for the last three years. And I think that we've all been pushing together for that, because that helps us do our jobs better. And having someone here, I think even, even somebody neutral with, with contentious issues in the city, where it's not coming from the administration, I think it helps having a city solicitor that come up and say, hey, this is what other communities have done for a transfer tax, and this is the reason legally why X, Y, and Z. It kind of, we don't have that. It seems like we have a divide. And we don't, you know, KP laws already mentioned that they don't work for this council. And that brings up another contentious, contentious issue that, you know, that everybody keeps harping on. That was where, whether we are or whether we're not, are not, we just don't know, because we haven't seen the actuals that break down KP laws, you know, what they've been paid the last few years. But I think that stuff would help with really helping us grow and, and get together. So I think that's important. I think if we can too, Mr. President, if we can, number nine, my, for the DPW cement and hot top, I appreciate you putting that up there. But, I mean, even if we can, if we can reach out in, in a form of a motion to ask the DPW Director just to do, just to do an analysis of what it would cost for a three-team and equipment, it's something that, when I did it, it took me maybe three days with the Director of DPW in Summerall and the Director of DPW in Wakefield at the time. That helped me get those numbers. And then, and then, and just show us, give us an idea of what we spent in bonding. And how, it's these issues that, we've had the data, and it's presented, and they say, George, what we're spending for this staff, plus the benefits in the equipment, is definitely less, more than what it would cost to bond the $2 million a year. And, and that could, that's an easy, you know, easy look at something to say, okay, that's just not efficient. But that can also come back the other way and say, wow, a crew of three can do X, Y, and Z, but I think it would help us, you know, moving forward to make some big decisions, moving forward. I, I don't, I don't see it happening in this budget, from, from what I hear, where we're going to be. But maybe down the line, we'll have things in place that would help us make better fiscal decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Just, I have that as requesting a cost analysis from the DPW Commissioner for in-house cement and hot top equipment and staffing compared to the annual cost of bonding for sidewalk and street repair.
Yes, thank you. That's perfect.
Counselor Sane, Counselor, or did I have Counselor Kelly on first?
Thank you. It was just a quick, did this not already go into committee as a request that we were making in the committee, in Public Works Committee? I thought it maybe did. I just want to make sure we're not doubling up two motions for the same. I'm totally in favor, and also the five-year plan for the roads, I think, is, is going to go through that committee as well, rather than be a budget request. Mr. Clerk, do you happen to remember if a motion went through the committee, the Public Works Committee?
I'm looking it up.
Either way, we should have.
No, I agree.
You're out of here or out of there?
Just to get it before the budget season, I think that, just an understanding, so we know.
I, I believe we discussed it. I can't remember if a motion was referred out to the administration. So we can just put this as a, as a motion coming out of here.
Thank you.
And maybe we can give it a paper number, Mr. Clerk.
This, this committee report has a paper.
Right. Can we, can we separate this out as a separate, like a B paper? Great. And we can refer the response to Public Works.
Thank you.
Counselor Sane.
If Counselor Scarpelli would be in the hole, I think that B paper would be a good chance to ask DPW what they think an appropriate increase in the spending for road signage markings are. Because I was talking with some of our department heads, and they were saying that they, that's something that they wanted to advocate for this, in this year's budget, because it slows down road repaving, repavings a lot. But they didn't give me a solid figure for us to advocate for.
Sorry, so would that be, and I requested amendment to the B paper, that they also include?
Proposed spending number for increased spending of roads and. I'm sorry, I can't type that fast. Requesting a proposed number for increased spending in road signage markings and striking.
And that's to ensure no delays in road repair?
To speed up road.
To speed up.
From, from my conversation with the heads, they were saying that because we have some, because we have rules around the signage and in the markings that we need, that we don't have much of it for it. Often times, even if they can theoretically do a road, it can't do it without that appropriation for the markings.
Got it. Counselor Lemon.
Thank you. This is just, just asking if anybody knows this information. So I remember when I was asking about a couple of these positions a few months ago, specifically the salary increases. A response that I got was that they would need to do a study to figure out what the salary increase is ought to be. And I know that that was being brought up for the Economic Development Director, specifically with that position that ended up being hired. I'm just curious, is there sort of any of these, any of these positions still under any sort of study to figure out what exactly the salary increase should be, like the city solicitor in particular? Or is that sort of floating around at the staff level at this point? Do you, would you?
I believe they are all still under study, and I do not know the timeline when we will receive that study.
So they're all, the city solicitor, everything is still under study?
My understanding is that everything, every position on the city side is undergoing a classification and compensation study by the Collins Center. And we have not received a timeline when that will be submitted for updating the CAF ordinance.
Right. Thank you.
So, and that's been going on a while now. I know that staff had a, city side staff had interviews with Collins Center representatives last fall. Does that sound right to you?
Yeah.
So it's been a pretty long process, and we haven't been given a clear timeline. And it has been used to justify not moving on certain things. So just so I have it correct, right now, we have the B paper regarding some DPW costs. Then we have the recommendation for a level service budget. We have a recommendation to increase the budgeted amount for city solicitor and assistant city solicitor. Do we want to get more specific? I know Counselor Sang, you had a health department item, do you want to get more specific on that?
We can list out the positions. So basically, what I was thinking was prevention and outreach positions and the community zones.
And do you think that that is captured by the preventing cuts to grant funded positions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So we've still got some room here. Personally, I would like to see something included around seed money from, as part of the budget or from free cash to create a clear plan for updating city financial software and payroll systems. I think that's a huge problem.
I, I'd be happy to move on it, especially since I also brought it up. I think it's, we, we really need to be putting in the, the long term, long-term steps for us to, you know, grow our finances and to, to be able to process our finances better. And so I completely agree. It's a priority of ours.
Great. Counselor Collins.
Just adding my note of assent, I would also support putting that forward as a reckon, as a recommendation at this time. I think it's, this council has spoken before about, you know, how many other problems that touches and exacerbates city side in terms of staffing and departmental function. And I think, you know, the time to start advocating for progress towards a solution is the sooner the better.
Yeah, it does seem to be the source of many of our other mistrusts and disagreements.
If I can, Mr. President.
Counselor Scarpelli.
And this is where I get a little confused because it's, the functions, when you hear some of the, the issues with the finance department, the software, is it, is it truly that? I, I think that truly hasn't been defined yet. Because some of the, the information we're getting from the previous finance director, the information was the same software that's being used. I would recommend that maybe getting more staffing and moving that forward because I, you know, I'd like to see the, a, a cost analysis to that to see what it would take if it's a, you know, $80,000 software system that we have to pay year after year, you know, purchase once and then pay year after year in comparison to hiring an assistant in the finance department. It'd be interesting to see what that, that would look like. I think that, I just, you know, a lot of it, a lot of the financial questions we have, I think revert back to not being communicated, not being transparent. I don't, I don't really trust the administration when they say it's the software system that's antiquated because the finance department that worked at the beginning of your tenure, Mr. President, at the beginning of my, my time at the council, we were updated and we were informed and those pieces were in place to make sure that, for instance, the retro That system was in place when, when contracts were ratified years ago that did the work to make sure that our employees were given their retro pay in reasonable time. So I, again, I just, I, I don't want to be the pessimist. I don't want to be the, the, this, you know, the, the siren every time, but I, I don't want us to throw good money after bad when it could be something that it's just management, not system.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Sang.
I believe that the last committee of the whole, you had a really good explanation for what exactly we're looking for in terms of financial software. I, I think what Counselor Scarpelli is maybe referring to is a little different to what we were referring to and was wondering if, I mean, you explained it best. I was wondering if you could explain it again for, for the, for the council.
Sure. I mean, I think, I think there's a both and here and I think it's fine to update this to be a both and kind of question. You know, I, my understanding is that there are multiple systems that have difficulty talking to each other and require a lot of work to make sure there's not double counting and things of that nature. We've suffered through that with the fiscal 2023 ARPA discussion. The schools just had another example of that where it was like, oh, we have a 2.5 million deficit, but then it's like, oh, when we go through, we look at double counting, we look and making sure everything's in the right account, it's not 2.5 million, it's 216,000, right? So we have these issues where maybe the expertise of prior staff or reasons that those weren't issues in the past, maybe they understood the software better and maybe had been here when they established the, put that software in a place. So I think it could be both and, and I'm happy to personally, I'd be more than happy, I think I had it in here, study or consultant review of finance department, software upgrade, or this is Counselor Collins, software upgrade options and develop implementation scenarios, which also talked about expanding the personnel budget because maybe it is, there's a bottleneck on the personnel side of just reviewing reports in a timely manner.
That's great.
So I think we could throw that in as well.
Appreciate that.
But the communication issues are twofold. It's the communication issues between people and it seems to be also communication issues between systems. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think since, since I had to make the motion, I'd be happy to amend it as well.
Okay.
To, to include staffing.
Great. I'm writing them down and I'll send them to you. So I have three things. I'll go to Counselor Collins. Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Behrs. I appreciate this exchange around the finance department. Neil Yu, I'll second the motion and I, I agree with all that's been stated. I think that, you know, obviously it, it is not one or the other. I think being a member of the administration and finance committee this term and also in the past one, we've had many, I think, very revealing conversations with the finance, the current finance director about the ways in which the software really is a problem right now. And of course, I think it is very obvious that staffing is also an issue and that the two exacerbate the other. So I think that the, the phrasing we've worked towards strikes the right balance of acknowledging both. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. So we have three, one, three that I can read back now. I don't think we have to go beyond three. These are pretty major issues around the budget. I think they do hit what a lot of us are concerned about. I'm just going to quickly look through what else we have here. I mean, I think a lot of these have value and again, all of them will go up, but is there anything else that anyone else wants to include beyond the three main recommendations that we have before I read them back? Vice President Collins.
Thank you, President Behrs. I, before you read them back, I just want to, you know, kind of note my support for keeping our list of recommendations short and sweet this year and that's kind of going against my own instinct. I remember, you know, my first year on the council, I, my, the wish list that I submitted for our first committee of the whole on this topic was amounted to, you know, the hundreds of millions of dollars and ideas for how to make our city more functional and shore up all of our critical departments. That, so, you know, I'm, so I'm extremely compelled by and sympathetic to, you know, all of the other recommendations that I also submitted two weeks ago and agree with everything that's been submitted by my fellow counselors. At the same time, I think that we, we're, we're going into this knowing that this is going to be a difficult budget season after a couple of difficult budget seasons. I think that there is a, a power that comes from having a very succinct list and saying, you know, we've, we've, we've done the hard work and we've really considered what needs to be in, in that shortlist of things that we cannot go without in this budget cycle, even though we know it is going to be a hard one. And what I appreciate about, about this, this group of three that we've put together, together, is that to me, it's about level service. And I think, you know, over the past couple of years, we've had many important public discussions about the difference between level service and level funding and what the residents and city staff deserve is level service, not level funding. So I think that this list prioritizes that and I think it gets at the heart of the staffing and funding infusions that need to happen so that we can, you know, stop regressing on certain departments and start to move forward. You know, I think here in the city council, we see that the most with the legal department or lack thereof. So I think that these few recommendations that we put together so far kind of strike at what we really need to see in order to be functional as a body and functional as a city. Of course, if other counselors have recommendations of things that they need to be on the shortlist, I'm sure I'll find those ideas compelling, but I just wanted to note advocacy for a short, tight list this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Any further discussion on this topic before I read back the motions? Seeing none, we have the main motion by Counselor Sang, seconded by Counselor Collins as amended by Counselors Scarpelli and Callahan for the fiscal year 25 council budget recommendations. First recommendation for a level service budget for the city of Menford, including meeting the Menford Public Schools funding recommendation of the Menford School Committee, the Menford Public Library funding recommendation of the library trustees and maintaining all grant funded city positions in every department with the acknowledgement that most of those grant funded positions currently exist in the Board of Health, Office of Planning, Development and Sustainability, and Office of Planning and Outreach, or sorry, Office of Prevention and Outreach. The second recommendation is to increase the budgeted amount for the city solicitor salary by $49,871 per year and the assistant city solicitor salary by $37,178 per year to maintain competitiveness when they bring communities. And the third is a recommendation that the administration appropriate seed money as part of the fiscal 25 budget or from free cash reserves to develop a clear plan and timeline for updating the city financial software and payroll systems or to hire additional staff to speed up timeliness of financial reporting updates, calculation of retroactive pay and other payroll and finance updates. And then there's a B paper by Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Counselor Sang, as amended by Counselor Sang, be it resolved by the Menford City Council that we request a cost analysis from the DPW commissioner for in-house cement and hot top equipment and staffing compared to the annual cost on, of bonding for sidewalk and street repair and refer the response to the council's Public Works and Facilities Committee, be it further resolved that DPW include a proposed budget for road signage, marking and striping to speed up road repair. How does that sound? Great. We'll take the B paper first on Counselor Scarpelli's B paper, seconded by Counselor Sang, as amended by Counselor Sang. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan.
Yes.
Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sang.
Yes.
Yes, seven affirmative, none of the negative. B paper passes and is referred to the mayor. On the main motion by Counselor Sang, seconded by Counselor Collins, as amended by Counselors Callahan and Scarpelli, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro.
Yes.
Counselor Lemming. Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Yes, seven affirmative, none of the negative. Motion passes and I will make sure that that gets to the mayor under some council letterhead. Any further discussion on the budget before we move on to our regular meeting?
I'll just report paper to the mayor.
The mayor, please. On the motion of Counselor Scarpelli to report the paper out of committee to the mayor and can we add, adjourn?
Right.
And adjourn, seconded by Counselor Sang. You say it out loud.
I did.
I didn't hear Counselor Callahan did a, I'm very seriously, as the chair up here with Zoom and the computer, a verbal second is very important. I missed an entire motion because there wasn't a verbal second last meeting. So on the motion of Counselor Scarpelli, seconded by Counselor Sang, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan.
Yes.
Vice President Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro.
Yes.
Counselor Lemming.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli. Yes. Counselor Sang. Yes.
Yes, seven affirmative, none of the negative. The motion passes and the meeting is adjourned.